How's that?
Much better, much better.
Okay, good evening.
All right, it's seven o'clock, so can we start our executive session? Good evening, regular petitioners. We apologize for the delay. We had to have a little executive session to talk about some litigation. Unrelated to any of your matters. Okay. The petition for 11 South Main is first up. Maybe should we quickly take Sean Hogan gentleman first? Because they're just, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at their sign? Ron Stefick, did you?
Twenty-four Washingtons.
Was it twenty-four North, twenty-four North Main?
Yeah, I did, and it looks pretty good to me.
It did to me as well, so as soon as we get Jonathan back on, he was logging off one device and logging on another, we can tell the Hogans that they're good. And then they can get out of here, get out of everybody else's way. The sign looked terrific. How's your deal going, Sean? Is it going okay?
Yeah, I should be closing tomorrow at 10:00 AM.
All right, why is, why is the baby on the Zoom this time? I want to see the baby.
Baby is, is sound asleep.
Oh, okay.
We find it that way.
Skip.
Even, even I remember that rule. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan Fitch, did you have a chance to take a look at the sign designs that came in from Sean Hogan for 24 North Main Street?
I did, actually.
Yes, they looked, they looked good to me, they looked good to Ron. How did they look to you?
I, I thought that they were just what the doctor ordered.
All right, in that case, I move that we accept them as in satisfaction of the condition to our permit, and I'll take a second of that motion.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Further discussion? All in favor, I? I?
Fitch, I.
I.
All right. Those, those plans are accepted. Jeannie, put them in the record. All right. Thank you, Hogans.
Very good.
All right. Now, after, after a slight delay, Archer. I butcher your name, Negarian. Negarian, Archer Negar, may I call you Archer, please?
Yes.
All right. Archer for a special permit under 3.2.19 and 5.2.17, retail specialty food store with signage at 11 South Main Street. That is the once upon a time Subaru dealer and most recently bike shop, right?
Correct.
They're not, tell, tell us, and are you, you here to speak for the petitioner because you are the petitioner?
Correct.
All right, tell, tell us what you have in mind, please, sir.
So it will be from bike shop to retail store, and mostly will be all prepacked items in the fridges, wine, cheese. The only thing that will have as a bulk will be olive oil and a tea, and I'll have triple base sink in place that I spoke with the health department a couple of months back, and I'll present them a plan as well, and how they would want me to put the triple base sink and grease trap to, up to the code that we can just wash the scoops and some of the glass jars for tea.
So are you, you're preparing some food there?
No, 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 no food preparing, no.
Okay.
Everything will be prepacked.
Got it, okay, and you'll, and, and you've been in touch with the Board of Health, and you'll comply with all their requirements because they'll probably have a shopping list of things for you to do.
And this will be. Yeah, signage, I couldn't find a design because I haven't got the space yet. It's gonna be September 1st. Once I have a place, a keys in my hand, I'll do measurements, have a sign guy come in, and we'll have a designer to you guys.
Okay. All right, so we'll loop back to you on, on the sign. And this is the entire upstairs area, that downstairs area and back is still vacant. You're, you're, you're not buying the building, you're just leasing that space.
Correct.
Okay, got it. All right. Questions from other board members? Or any member of the public here to speak on this?
The Board of Health sent us a memo. And.
Sorry, Ron.
They indicated that there may be a requirement for a food establishment permit, but it doesn't sound to me.
No, I do, I do.
Preparing food.
We're not gonna prepare, but I still have to have that permit because in Belmont and in Maine, I do have that permit. It's a, there's a couple level of food permits. So the one that I will have, it's just has selling the food.
It's the vintler's permit, right?
Yes.
Right, yeah, okay.
All right.
All right, so you gotta have your vintler's permit, you won't have any food prep, you'll comply with all the requirements of the Board of Health. Ron, Ron, I don't have that letter. What else is in the letter from the Board of Health?
I can read it.
Please.
Because the Board of Health needs to review the adequacy of existing septic systems to determine if it is adequate for the proposed use. The applicant should be instructed to contact the Board of Health Food Inspector regarding the requirement for a food establishment permit and required inspections. The applicant should also be instructed to contact the health agent regarding any requirements pertaining to the septic system serving this property.
Okay, and when was that dated, please, Ron?
Dated July 22.
All right, that slipped through my nets, I'm sorry, everybody. Okay, July 22, 2021. Okay. All right, so in terms of signage, we would not be able to give you the sign permit now because you don't have a sign to propose to us. Would you propose to come back in a separate special permit application for that afterwards?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, just plan ahead because it'll have to be re-advertised, you'll have to go back for hearing and all this stuff. All right, great. But, but as we told Mr. Hogan, who was here before, if you get together with the zoning enforcement officer, Chris Kenny, and the planner, Gino Carlucci, they'll probably be able to give you some good guidance on sort of what sort of stuff is likely to fit.
You got it.
Okay, that'll make things a lot easier. Jonathan, questions, comments?
The, could you explain again what the the photograph, photographs attached to your application are? Is that what the space is gonna kind of look like?
Yes, so most, I have two stores and both stores are the exact same way right now. And I have wine shelves, olive oil, vinegars, refrigerators, freezers. So it would be like a grocery store with wine and beer in it. Mostly like specialty grocery store.
All right, so you're also gonna need alcoholic permit, too.
They already have it.
Got it.
They, they were in front of the selectmen in May, and, and that's why the pictures were there because Archer sent them for the, the beer and wine license.
Got it, and, and these are your other stores, sir?
Correct.
I got it, okay.
Okay. All right, well, it looks looks fine to me.
All right. Mr. Stefick, our, our chief design guru and esteemed.
The question, the photographs you said were of your other stores?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I always look consistent with all of the stores, exact similar.
Okay.
Okay, so Jeannie, keep me honest, but we're just giving him the retail specialty food store special permit tonight. Not, nothing for the signage, and he's allowed to do that there if he gets a special permit from us.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, with other businesses that, that have been there, they've gotten their special permit and come back for signage afterwards. So this isn't unusual.
Right, right, no, it's, it's all good. All right, I don't have any further questions. Ron, Jonathan?
No.
Either, either of you feel inclined to make a motion? I'm, I'm kind of all moved out after all of our motions during the.
Okay, well, I move that we allow the special permit to change the retail space 11 South Main Street Sherburne Mast from a bike shop to a retail specialty food store under section 3.2.19 of the zoning bylaws that the a condition be approval of all the requirements of the Board of Health. And the special permit will be for a period of what, two years?
Yeah, for the first two years.
Right, usually do it three, and, and I'll add a friendly amendment that one of the conditions be that there's no onsite food prep, and the other is that he gets the vintler's permits in addition to the Board of Health clearance.
That, that he'll get through the select board.
Right, exactly, I think, I think they issue it here.
Right.
I'd second that motion. Any other discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor of granting the special permit as articulated by the esteemed Jonathan Fitch? Please say, please say I, no backvotes, I.
Stefick, I.
Fitch, I.
All right, three, nothing, you have your permit, sir.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Now, look forward to coming into your shop. I hope it's a big success for you.
Yeah. I've gotta go get a cord for my phone.
Okay.
One, one second, in the rain, I'll be soaking wet when I get back here.
All right. And Jean Lekanby, you can start throwing your warm-up pitches to use the Red Sox analogy because you're next up on the mound.
This one should be pretty easy.
Looks like it. At least over on my side of town, it suddenly got very noisy and rainy.
It's really noisy and rainy.
I, are you back from Maine? I thought you were doing this from Maine, Jeannie?
No, I'm leaving tomorrow.
Got it.
I'll be back next Wednesday. I hope it's not rainy in Maine.
Well, whatever, whatever's over us now is gonna be gone shortly, you know, tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow noon time.
I'm going far north, okay.
Yeah.
Is he wet?
Oh, boy.
Probably looking for a towel to dry off.
Drenched.
Oh, my goodness.
The word is drenched.
Oh, gosh. Oh, my goodness. Jonathan, you are a team player.
Oh, boy. Technology is really giving me a hard time tonight, I'm not sure why.
In our house, we call that the revenge of the inanimate objects. Okay, are you ready to resume, sir?
I'm ready to resume, yep.
I didn't, didn't, usually the ZBA meetings don't include a wet t-shirt contest, but tonight's different. Okay.
Oh, well.
All right, petition 2021-6, Paul Popolo and Jean Lekanby for renewal of special permit 3.2 and 5.2.7 operation professional and business offices on the first and second floors with signage 19 North Main Street, the Business G District. Is everyone here to speak for the petitioner? Jeannie?
Just me. There are virtually no changes. We have on the first floor, the dentist and the physical therapist, they've been there for 10 years, and we hope that they'll be there for many, many more years. The second floor, we have new tenants in the north side office space, and we have the, we have various, a number of few small offices on the south side. So many have been there for a long time, so I don't think there's anything that, unless someone has some questions, I don't think there's anything that would be different from what has been there for a long time.
I was not able to print out, but I know what I saw in the pile, Jeannie, the, the prior permits. Were the prior permits tied to specific tenants or just tied to certain uses?
I'm sorry, that was thunder.
Yeah. Were the prior tenants? Were the prior permits tied to specific tenants or just certain uses of that space?
No, it was just the use of the space.
Got it, okay, and, and Ms. Lekanby, the, not to bring up a sore subject, but the, the drugstore space is still empty, and you're gonna look for somebody for that, and when you find somebody, you'll probably be back.
We hope to be back soon.
Great.
We, we hope you are as well. Certainly nobody in town was sorry to see them pull up stakes and leave.
And by, by the way, if, if I need to get a permit for that space, how long do I, do I have to make it, make a, an application or have them make an application? What's, what's the application deadline for like an August meeting?
Whoa.
We don't, we don't, we don't have an August meeting scheduled.
No, nothing scheduled.
But, but it, it will be a new special permit, so Jeannie would have to post it and have to be published twice, not less than 14 days ahead, so even if we had a, an August 27th meeting, just pulling a date out of the air, you need to have it in really soon.
Okay, that's fine.
Jeannie, is that right? I mean, that was just sort of.
I mean, yes, it can be really soon, and if you you could do it probably towards the end of August.
I think we're losing audio.
I have, I actually have two other permits that came in, and I told them. We would probably not have one till the beginning of September, but we could do the end of August.
I think the beginning of September would probably be fine anyways.
Gentlemen, how does that fit with the schedules for you? People around and?
Me, I have, I have no limitations early September.
I, I had just have conflict on the ninth and the 10th, September.
Well, I, I'm, I'm supposed to be flying out of town on the eighth for a vacation and a wedding in New Mexico, but it looks like the Delta variants may, may kill that off. But I, I think we had a plan on me not being available after like the, so Labor Day is what, the sixth, right? Under the sixth, so we could try why I got a really early flight on the eighth.
Do you want to do the last week in August?
Could we possibly do the last week in August, gents? What's, what's the Thursday of that week, Jeannie?
The second.
The second of September.
Could people do Thursday, September 2nd?
Yes.
I'm, I'm open for that.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's schedule a hearing for then. That'll allow your other petitions to get in there. And, and Ms. Lekanby, if, if you get a tenant who can get in in time, that, that's the window to hit.
Terrific.
All right. That was all a sidetrack off the main application, which was just for a straight renewal. And was it for five years, Jeannie?
Five.
Yeah.
All right, and is there anyone here to, and are you through speaking in favor of the petition, ma'am?
I, I don't think there's anyone else here.
Right, well, I have to ask anyway, anybody? Nora might be wanting to speak against you, you never know.
That's right. I'm sure she'd speak very favorably on my behalf.
Is, is there, is there anyone here to speak against the petition for 19 North Main Street? All right, hearing none. All right, I, I move that we grant the petition for renewal of the existing special permit for 19 North Main Street, first and second floor spaces, professional and business offices for an additional five-year term. That's my motion.
I second that.
Same conditions as the last one.
I second your motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Lively debate? Insults, motions to disqualify? Okay, none of those, okay, Ron. All right, all in favor vote I, no backvotes, I.
Stefick, I.
Fitch, I.
There you go, all right. Ms. Lekanby, good luck.
Thank you so much.
With your replacement drugstore tenant, get one in there.
Will do, thanks.
All right. Last but not least, petition of Nora Lynch, 5 Washington Street LLC for a special permit under sections 3.2.17, 3.2.19, and 5.2.7 where the operation of professional offices and retail spaces with signage at 5 Washington Street. That's the little yellow house at the split, right?
Yes, it is, indeed.
All right, and Ms. Lynch, are you here to speak in favor of your own petition?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Would you like to do so?
Yes, so I'm very excited. We are, where the French doors are unto the right is going, we're hoping to be Sherburne Gallery and Gifts LLC, it's already been filed. So we would like to open up a shop for really specialty, looking for local artists and vendors for a gift shop and also a gallery hosting basically one artist a month, a special artist to feature. And then the professional offices will be towards the front of the building, in the main building, and that would be a landmark residential, and also you know, possibly leasing out some professional office space above on the second floor. And that is it.
And you were asking for blessing for a sign as well, and you sent in.
As the retail space. For the professional offices and then retail where the side entrance is that where the French doors are on the photographs.
And can you sort of walk? It looks like you're planning to put landmark residential on the side of the building.
If I can, I had that sign from our Wellesley office, so I thought I would ask about that. I don't know if there was ever a sign on the building, so just wanted to ask about that. But definitely on that side of the building would be still where the, there are just two posts there, and just put very basic, you know, white background with the black lettering, a lot of times New Roman type of face for the office. The front, the bigger, where the Metro West Insurance Group signage will be putting a small landmark logo, somewhat, you know, just small 3D right there. Right now, it has MW on one side of the sign, and then we'll be doing Landmark Residential, and then Nora Lynch and Associates, or actually Sherburne Gift, Gallery and Gifts, and then Nora Lynch and Associates. So they'd be similar to where my old office was in Sherburne, at least where the Clark House is. Sign will be painted black rather than that rust color, brown color. And you're, you're muted.
I didn't want everybody here to hear my allergies and my coughing. Is there anyone else here to speak to this petition?
My husband, so he's just.
Yeah, well, he, you know, that's not a guarantee.
No, it is not, actually.
I don't, I don't always carry a voting majority here at Mason Hill Farm, that's for sure. Okay, all right, so he, he's in favor, right? So, gentlemen, let's talk about breaking this down into the uses and then the signage, because this is also a historic building, and I can sort of, I can, I can see where I'm thinking about how this all fits and works. As to the uses, Jeannie, help me out, it, it, it's that Business G District, so they can do it if they get the special permit.
And there has been a retail store there before.
Right, and there was a law firm in there, John was in there for a long time.
And financial services within there also.
Right. So tell us about the retail use. And well, tell us about all the uses and parking.
So we have, so a couple of things, as you probably noted on there, I am meeting with Mark Orem. I guess their conditional, their certificate of compliance was a conditional certificate of compliance about five years ago with the Board of Health for the new septic system. So what I've actually even done, there were, there were railroad ties that were already falling over, but it was to inspect the railroad ties. What I've already done, though, is put really nice granite around the, I guess you call it the raised septic system. But there are about nine spaces there in the front, I've already spoken with Jeannie, that probably out of those nine in the front, there'll be one, actually, one will have to be a handicap space, and that basically takes up two. But then in that lower level where the grass is or weeds right now, there'll be additional parking down there. And that's all part of the parking that's always been there. I think it was about 17 spaces, Jeannie, that were part of the building.
I don't know how many, but there, there are spaces outside that where the retail would go.
And what are they required to have in terms of required spaces?
Have you talked to Gino, Laura, about the?
No, I have not, but I know there was retail there before. I can certainly get.
I would reach out to Gino.
Enjoy it. Okay.
Because you're not really doing a change in use, but he can tell you that better.
Right, you're doing some some site changes. I see, so you get, that's right, there's, I'm looking at this now in Google Maps, that's right, you've got your own separate parking area above and below.
And below, though, that's considered parking.
And and this thing that looks a little bit like a raised bed is probably your septic system, which is probably a raised septic system held together by landscape ties now granite.
Right.
Come up with something that works.
And by the way, you know, and the wall has already been fixed on 27th side, that was great, that's actually, the wall is actually owned by the town, which I found out during my due diligence, and we were able to facilitate that pretty quickly to get that repaired because that was in real disrepair, falling onto the sidewalk on 27th.
Which is not good.
No, so it was, it was great that it's, I mean, I'm really taking care of that, I'm very excited to make that. It's been really, you know, on the market for years.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's, it's nice to have somebody interested in it, so don't, don't, don't mistake our questions for us.
No, no, that's totally fine.
Ron, help me out a little bit on the historic side of this. Are you making, no changes to the exterior of the building other than signage?
No changes.
So that's not an issue.
Right.
No changes.
Except making it prettier.
A building signage.
Flowers, grass.
Which is which can be permitted.
Right, just, just, just looking at that. Do we? Do we think we want a site plan here? Sort of showing how it all fits together? I mean, I, I don't want to make her throw away a lot of money on engineers, but it'd be nice to be able to have in our record something about how it's supposed to look. How do you feel about that, Ron? Yeah. What happens is you, you, you issue a permit in 2021 and eight years later, somebody, not you, not as nice as you, but maybe less honorable, has gone and changed some things around. You say, wait a second, you weren't supposed to do that. They say, what do you mean? It was always that way. So.
Yeah, I, I think we need to nail down the number of spaces where they're located. The excess to in front of the street.
Are you working with a, an interior architect on sort of your interior layouts and things like that?
No, it's all been set. I haven't changed a thing inside.
Okay. I'm trying to think of the cheapest way through the engineering ticket for them to be able to produce what we want.
There's, I think, uh, go ahead, Jeannie.
I was gonna. If you contact Gino, he might have a site plan from before that.
Oh, that's a really good idea.
I think I have a site plan. I'm sorry, I thought it was, this was mostly for permit for the sign and just kind of a, you know, because it was there and it's been always a business there. So I definitely can get, I just can't access the Five Washington Street file right here, right now. But what I can do is certainly, I know there is a site plan and I know there were specific parking spaces and counting it out. And actually, what I was going to do is make that really nice instead of that gravelly weeds, I was going to put really nice grass there and then put kind of, my plan was to put, because that's really excess parking, I don't anticipate using a lot of those parking spaces unless we have, you know, an event, which isn't going to be that often. But to put more granite type of pavers in, so it's mostly grass, but you'll have the granite pavers. And, and I was planning on redoing all of that driveway area to, you know, have it relined, have new, you know, whole new driveway and parking lot there.
Well, what about this?
I, I need some clarification. It's not clear to me. Are you adding parking spaces to what's there?
No, 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 parking spaces, I'm not adding any parking spaces. There are nine, but very faint lines. And there's not a handicap area yet, which would, I would imagine would be closer to where the French doors are. So I wanted to make sure that I was addressing those rules and regs as far as a handicap spot. And then there are about, so there are nine in the front and then there are more additional 10 below. And there's also one that could be considered.
Exister at this point in time, the tenor.
Yes, they're considered, that's how many parking spaces are, are with that property is.
What's the paving for those 10 spaces?
There is no paving there right now. It's just rock, which is now, you know, like a thin layer of gravel.
It's, it's stone dust that's become overgrown with weeds.
Oh, it is gravel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. I have a suggestion here, Ms. Lynch, that might not cost you much money, but could make us a lot, a lot more comfortable. Which is from, from Gino or from anywhere, if you can get a, a, as good a copy as you can get of the last site plan, and then mark that up with what you're going to do, you know, two handicap spaces here. Replace gravel here with pavers. You don't have to hire an engineer to do it. We just need to be able to, to, to see it and figure it out.
I'm sorry about prepared, I thought, because it was already professional space with that many parking spaces, it just hasn't been used in a while. That's.
Yeah. Don't apologize. You did nothing wrong. We're just trying to get it all nailed down.
No, I understand you correctly. You are modifying the parking by converting some to handicap, right?
Right, right.
Just to follow the rules and regs, yes.
Right, right.
That's, but
it is a change.
You are making modifications to the park.
Right. Required ones.
You're making it better. I understand that.
Okay.
But we need to know precisely what you're doing and we need to have a record of that. That's.
Certainly.
That's what it is in a nutshell.
So Ron and Jonathan, if we had a, a, a prior plan marked up in detail with what they're doing, would, would you find that satisfied? Would you two find that satisfactory?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I would, then.
I would as well. And that will also give you a chance to have slightly more detail. Again, they can be hand drawn of exactly what you're proposing for signage.
Yeah, we need an actual sign.
Okay, I will have my sign person who is in Sherburne, Miranda, he is on vacation this week, so I didn't want to have him hurry up, you know, it's.
If, if he can dummy something up, you, you, you saw what the, what the nice gentleman sent in for, for 24 North Main. It doesn't have to be a perfectly engineered plan. We just have to be able, have to be able to figure out what it looks like.
Okay.
And, and you can show right on your little marked up site plan, you know, this site, this sign, this big goes here. This sign, this big goes on the side of the building here. So we can see where everything is. And if you talk with Chris Canny and Gino in advance about those signs, they should, they should be able to give you some great coaching on this will work, this won't.
Got it.
Because they, they, they know the bylaw pretty well. I mean, this sounds like a great project and a great reuse of the building that, that, that needs a friend, so we're, we're supporting. But I'd probably suggest that maybe we continue this to our meeting on the
Second.
Second. Is that going to give your plan horrible heartburn, Ms. Lynch? We continue it to the second?
No, what, the second of what?
September. That's our next here, meeting.
The second of what? I'm sorry.
The, the September 2nd, 2020. Oops, she's, she's frozen now.
Yeah.
Sorry, the second of what?
2021.
September. The second, the second is a date. September 2nd.
Okay, got it. I, I've been, you all froze, so I apologize.
It's okay.
All right.
The next September 2nd, whatever year it is.
Got it. All I heard was second, so.
That's the joke about how Zooms are like séances. Wait, we can't hear you. Is someone trying to reach us?
So am I allowed to actually operate in there in terms of not necessarily for the gallery and gifts, but as far as, you know, having mail delivered and being there and getting it ready? It's just not technically.
I, I think, I think you shouldn't be doing business in there, but certainly you can get mail, you can be doing preparation work. You, you don't have your permit yet. A lot of people.
Exactly.
Get, get, you know, don't have a dozen clients in for, for a real estate entertainment, don't be selling all the gifts and the, but, but getting it fitted, getting it ready.
Exactly. Okay, just wanted clarification on that. Perfect.
Jeannie, I think that's the way Chris Canny would interpret it, right? She's not, she's not open to doing business in there.
Right, but you can start getting ready.
Right.
Okay, that's what I've been doing. Okay, great.
All right, awesome.
I'll talk to Gino and Chris and get that rolling more specifically.
Wonderful.
Hey, thank you.
All right, so I, I move that we continue, continue petition. Oops, I flipped to the wrong nature. Hold on, get there. It's petition.
Twenty.
Twenty twenty one dash seven to September the 2nd, 2021.
Got it.
At 7:00 PM.
Second.
A second.
Okay. Any, any further discussion before we let poor Jonathan go dry off?
I'm very comfortable, thank you.
Well, you're probably a lot cooler than I am. All right, all, all in favor, aye, no backvotes, aye, on the continuance?
Stephick, aye.
Fitch, aye.
All right, Ms. Lynch, we'll see you again on September 2nd. Thank you very much. We look forward to your project being a big, big success. And a great reuse, and a great reuse. Jeannie, do we have anything else?
Nothing. You are done.
I, 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 I move that we adjourn.
Well, I second that. I second that.
All right.
Lengthy debate, all in favor, aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 bye. Thank you all.
Good evening.